Good evening, welcome to the June 16th, 2025 Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. I will call this meeting to order. If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing as we have an invocation by Dan Marshall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow with me in prayer? Gracious Lord and our Creator, we come to you once again to acknowledge your sovereignty over these proceedings and to ask your grace, love, and mercy to be evident in this meeting. As your representatives conduct the people's business, may they do so with the realization that they have been called to serve not themselves, but you and those who have placed them here. Over the past several weeks, this commission has worked through many issues and options that have required wisdom, insight, courage, and deference toward one another. They have now crafted a budget that reflects many man-hours of intensive calculations and the sorting out of challenging priorities. We know that not all parties connected to this effort and not all groups will be totally satisfied with the results. However, we thank you, Lord, for granting these representatives and their staff the dedication, skill, and energy to work through this difficult process. We ask you to grant them continuing wisdom to carry out the provisions of this budget, to be diligent managers and administrators. What you have called them to do, you will supply the resources to accomplish. Grant them the presence of mind and the heart to look to you for those resources. May your words in Proverbs Chapter 9, verse 10 be the foundation for all that they say and do. Fear of the Lord is the foundation of wisdom. Knowledge of the Holy One results in good judgment. We pray that as they follow this truth, they will reap the godly results of applying it daily. Those results are described in Proverbs Chapter 8, verses 14 through 17, as wisdom personified speaks to us. Common sense and success belong to me; insight and strength are mine. Because of me, kings reign and rulers make just decrees. Rulers lead with my help, and nobles make righteous judgments. I love all who love me; those who search will surely find me. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Commissioners, I do need a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes on page four.
Madam Active Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented with one amendment. I want us to insert, as our organizational meeting, the first item on the agenda tonight. And if I can get a second, we would like for this to be turned over to the county manager for the process of nominating and electing a chair for the rest of this season.
Second.
Need to vote?
So I will take a motion. Okay. Okay. Well, who would like to make a motion?
So you open it up to discussion, so if there's any debate about the motion to approve the agenda by adding, by the addition, and then call the vote after that.
All right. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay.
So now call the vote.
All right. And who are we? We're just voting to amend the agenda to add a vote for the chair.
That's right.
Can I have a motion? Or don't need a motion?
Yeah, I've already made the motion. And I think in a second.
All in favor?
All in favor. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Commissioner, what's your vote, I suppose?
Well, normally, normally, the county manager proceeds with the nomination of the chair.
I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to determine what his, yes, you voted, I apologize. Okay. Sorry.
So that carries thirty-two?
Yeah, I didn't hear the vote. Thirty-two, yes. Okay. My apologies.
So would that need to be the next? Okay.
Yes.
All right. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for chairperson of the commission board.
I'll nominate Laura Lindsay.
And I want to nominate Jeff Jones. Jeff is our new commissioner, and I feel like Jeff will do a very good job for us because, folks, our board is divided. As worst as I've ever seen a board be divided, and with Jeff just coming on, being new, he don't know this side and he don't know that side, and hopefully, we can bring peace and put this division, because we're not going to get anything done like this. You know, it's, I mean, I told you, Laura, you know, I don't even feel like I can talk to you, and you're our acting chair, and I feel like I can't even talk to you. And Larry, I haven't talked with you since you've been on the board. But anyway, that's my nomination, Jeff Jones.
Okay. So I've heard a nomination for Laura Lindsay with a second and a nomination for Jeff Jones with a second. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Do we do discussion prior to vote? Any discussion?
With all due respect to Mr. Jones, I think he's shown to be a fairly good guy so far, but as pointed out by the one who nominated him, he doesn't have the experience on the board to be chair, and so I could not support the nomination for that reason.
When Jeff first came up here, he wanted to seek compromise. I was one of the other ones originally nominated, and I'm willing to compromise, and that's why I seconded it.
I'd like to address Commissioner Shu. I have called you, and we've had discussion, and because I didn't necessarily agree with you, you told me that you had to get off the telephone with me because you were making yourself upset. And I'm sorry that you're not able to have those kind of discussions and disagreements with folks, but that's part of what being a commissioner is, is being able to have open and honest conversation with each other. And you were unwilling to even finish that phone call with me, and it was less than ten minutes. With all due respect, Commissioner Jones, I do thank you very much for taking this position on the board. I don't claim to be an expert at being the chair, but I've reached out to all of you to ask if you had discussion. I think our previous budget meeting went extremely well. We had very good conversation, and so I, you know, if this is a role that you would like to take on, that is fine. However, I just think with the experience that I've had so far, being the interim at this point, I think we've done a good job in communicating with each other, and I'm willing to continue, continue on in this role, if y'all will have me. But Commissioner Shu, I don't, I've reached out to you several times to have a conversation with you, and, you know, it's unfortunate that you don't take to having a conversation where it's not always agreement with you, but I have been willing and open to speaking with you.
Ma'am, I just want to say Laura has had experience in government, not just here, but on school board. I think with the challenges that we've faced, she's handled it very well and could continue to do so. I'd like to see that happen. Mr. Shu not being to talk to me, that's not my fault. I have often had conversations with people I know hate my guts. I don't normally seek them out for that, but if they talk to me, I'll talk to them. You have not approached me, so, you know, that ain't my fault. I know you hate my guts, but I would talk to you anyway if you just tried.
I'm sorry, if I may, one more comment? Is that okay? Okay. The other thing is, Commissioner Shu, you were not at the last budget meeting, which was unfortunate, because we actually had probably one of the best conversations that we've ever had as a commission board together. So I think had you been there, you would have been able to see what a good discussion that was.
Any other discussion before we close the floor? Okay. Here in none, I heard the nomination for Laura Lindsay first, so we will open the voting for chairperson of the commission with Laura Lindsay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I hear two VAs. All those opposed?
No.
Three noes.
We'll move on to Chairman, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Jeff Jones for chairman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. All those opposed?
No.
Two noes. The motion carries for Commissioner Jones. A brief recess. I mean, if y'all want to arrange your, reconfigure yourselves.
Yeah, I should have clarified that motion a little bit. That would take effect immediately. I should have clarified that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I mean, that was my assumption, so we can take a brief recess to reorganize ourselves, and then, we don't need to, oh, you.
I mean, I can take a recess, but I don't want to switch, but she's, she's going to have to help guide me.
All right, then, that's totally fine, then. That's y'all's choice, frankly, the two of y'all, so.
Can we take a quick recess just a second? I don't think he has any right now, it's a small.
Okay. At the clerk's request, we need two minutes for a recess, so.
I will be recessed for two minutes.
[inaudible]
You're going to stay there?
Yeah, I think we're good.
So what's, I'm going to be doing at the same.
All right, now we'll proceed with recognitions and presentations. Tracy Compton, sorry if I get your name wrong, Tracy, with Cooperative Extension.
Yes, absolutely. Good afternoon, good evening. I'm glad that we get to bring light to some recognitions and presentations for our colleagues around Cabarrus County, because I think it's really exciting to shed light on all the great things that are being done here in the county. And at this time, I would like to welcome Christine Barrier to come up with me at this moment. We actually started this journey last fall. Christine actually retired January 1st, so this is what retirement looks like. It's a beautiful thing. And, but the application got lost during the change of administration, so after reaching out to the governor himself and their staff, they were very excited to bestow this honor today, and Governor Stein and his staff send their apologies and apologize for the delay in such things this evening. But it actually is kind of timely, because in extension, NC State University requires our extension staff to take a six-month leave of absence of everything extension-related. It allows both the new employee and the retiree to find their new niche in their new role and figure out how that might look, and timingly, July 1st, she can come back in, and we look forward to bringing that, and our retirees within that six months, they get to come back in and take full advantage of everything that we do at extension as a volunteer, as a club leader, a club member, or any of the other fun things, just to learn all the things that we do in Cooperative Extension. So starting in 1980, with time split between the Veterans Office and the Extension Office, Christine Barrier joined our team and added these years of experience with her five-year previous county employment to serve over fifty years here in Cabarrus County. She started as a 4-H secretary, back when each of our program areas had their own secretary. She loved sharing stories of when the office had one computer, and everybody got their email through that one computer, and her job in the morning was to go to that computer, print off everyone's emails, and take it physically to each door, and I can't imagine her doing that now with the 110 emails I receive every day. She and I, when I started in 2014, would love talking about all of the stories and things from the office, when I would come to her and go, what is this? And she would be able to tell me what it was and how it worked in the office many years before I came and joined. She, we would find these pieces of memorabilia, and then we would also love asking the interns if they knew what a floppy disk was, what an overhead transparency was, and what was that little flash cube that went on top of cameras. We still have those in the office, and if you ever need any kind of fun history lesson, you can stop by the Cooperative Extension Office and see all the collection of fun random things that we still have in our office. We have slideshows, all kinds of fun things. Christine was, is, is, the epitome of an extension employee. She was often doing things for the good of the cause, what she would call a company man, a kind of dedication in the office that we don't see much anymore. She's been through countless budget meetings. She understands those thick and thin years, and she knows that like us all, we figure out what's best for the group. She continues to advocate for extension and has done so at the local, state, and national level for the entirety of her career. She saw the values of extension and her position within it so much that she worked to coalesce her colleagues up and down the East Coast together to start the Extension and Research Support Staff Association, otherwise known as TERSA, a professional development association just for those in extension administrative support positions. Since its inception in 2006- She, we would find these pieces of memorabilia, and then we would also love asking the interns if they knew what a floppy disk was, what an overhead transparency was, and what was that little flash cube that went on top of cameras? We still have those in the office. And if you ever need any kind of fun history lesson, you can stop by the Cooperative Extension Office and see all the collection of fun random things that we still have in our office. We have slideshows, all kinds of fun things. Christine was, is, is the epitome of an Extension employee. She was often doing things for the good of the cause, what she would call a company man, a kind of dedication in the office that we don't see much anymore. She's been through countless budget meetings. She understands those thick and thin years. And she knows that like us all, we figure out what's best for the group. She continues to advocate for Extension and has done so at the local, state, and national level for the entirety of her career. She saw the values of Extension and her position within it so much that she worked to coalesce her colleagues up and down the East Coast together to start the Extension and Research Support Staff Association, otherwise known as TERSA. A professional development association just for those in Extension administrative support positions. Since its inception in 2006, TERSA has grown to include 10 states and hundreds of members. As a founding member, Christine still remains active. She knows the value of hard work and a job well done, tirelessly advocating for agriculture and Extension here in Cabarrus County, while truly living up to the Extension motto, "Putting knowledge to work." With this, I invite Commissioner Pittman to help me to bestow upon her the Order of the Longleaf Pine.
Christine, you're gonna come stand here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'll hold it if you need me to.
Well, I gotta read it. I couldn't memorize that all that quickly. Christine, it's an honor to be allowed to present this to you. I'll just read it first. State of North Carolina, Josh Stein, Governor. "Reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Christine C. Barrier, I do by these presents confer the Order of the Longleaf Pine with the rank of Ambassador Extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is a special privilege to propose the following: North Carolina toast and select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the longleaf pine, the summer land where the sun doth shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State. Josh Stein, Governor, January 1st, 2025." I'm just sorry we didn't get it till you sooner. But Christine is a very fine lady. I've known her for a long time. I've been here 34 years and I've known her most of that time. And she's been a public servant in every sense of the word. She cares about we the people. She cares that we're doing well and that we have opportunities to do better. And she's worked hard at that for all these years. And just, just a fine, fine lady. I don't know a thing bad I can say about her. So I just want to congratulate you, and I do want to say you're also the faithful and loyal wife of my good friend, Laura. We miss him. He was also a strong public servant. And y'all made a great team. And so, God bless you. And here you go.
Thank you.
Oh, did we not do that one? That's, this one took a long time. Okay. My apologies, we won't move to that yet. We'll move to the Proclamation for Active Living in Parks, Brian Hagler.
Good evening, Commissioners Management. July is Parks and Recreation Month, and it's a special opportunity to celebrate the people, the places, and the programs that make Cabarrus County an active, healthy, and connected community. Instead of reading a proclamation, we would rather play you a video. This video highlights the faces, the stories of our dedicated staff, the community members whose lives are enriched every day by our Parks Active Living Centers and programs. I'd also like to extend a special thank you to our Communications Department for bringing these moments to life and helping us showcase the impact of active living in parks, specifically Jalen McCray for putting this together.
Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Cabarrus County, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and the mental health of people who live near parks, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorder, and Alzheimer, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, education, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation of programming and educational activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation increases the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and...
Whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and...
Whereas Our Parks and Natural Recreation Areas ensure the ecological beauty of our communities and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and...
Whereas The House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and...
Whereas Cabarrus County recognizes the benefits derived from park and recreation resources.
Now...
Therefore...
Be it resolved...
By Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners...
That July is recognized...
As Park and Recreation Month...
In Cabarrus County.
One more time.
Whereas!
Obviously, that's much better than one of us reading a proclamation, giving you the visual of the impact of the Active Living in Parks Department. At this time, I'd like to call forward John Poole and some special guests. John Poole is the Program Supervisor for Frankless Park. He is over the management of our esteemed Discovery Day Camp. And I'd like for him to give a little bit more information about that program and the impact that this department has had. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate your time this evening. And I appreciate you giving me a chance to talk a little bit about our summer camp and dive a little bit deeper into the benefits of summer camp. So, most of the time when you hear the word "summer camp," you think of arts and crafts, kids going on trips, or maybe just give kids something to do, stay out of their parents' hair throughout the summertime. But our friend Noah here is an ideal representation of what summer camp is and what it's about. Noah's been with our camp for around eight years now. He, he started when he was six years old, and he is up to 13 now. So he is about to age out. He's had brothers in camp as well. So he, up until two years ago, he was a non-verbal. But as you could tell in this video, he is very verbal now. He was very excited. He showed confidence in the video, and he was itching to stand up and say "whereas," which, to most, it's just a simple phrase. But to camp counselors, whenever we saw it, tears start falling, filling people's eyes. The other kids, as you could tell in the video, started cheering and screaming. We knew it was more than just somebody saying "whereas." It was a huge moment. He's been coming back year after year with his family members. We've got counselors who have kind of took him under their wing and helped guide him and give him that confidence. So I just want to say thank you. I also want to say thank you to Jennifer for trusting us with your campers each and every year, bringing them back year after year, and all the nice things you've had to say about us. Thank you so much, and thank you for your support.
Okay, now to my favorite part, informal public comments. Oh, do we? Again, I jumped ahead of myself. I can't wait to get to the public comments. We need a motion to accept the proclamation.
Some minutes.
All in favor? Oppose? Now can I do my? All right, informal public comments. Let's open it up.
First up is Paul Wainish.
Hi, my name is Paul Wainish. I'm a Cabarrus resident, county Cabarrus and Concord resident. I'll take the other side of Byron. I talked with Byron just the other day about parks. So, I hope everybody enjoyed their Memorial Day weekend. I had a great time touring the county, looking at county properties. I looked over eight properties totaling 700 acres of well-manicured facilities. They all had nicely mowed fields, but I was shocked by the lack of people on this holiday. Though I could count hundreds of residents using county parks such as Dorton, Frankless, Vietnam Veterans Park, there wasn't a single person on the eight properties around the county. Then I realized that the property managers overtly discouraged use through signage, chain-link fence, locks, cumbersome procedural requirements. What was I looking at? Eight CCS high school campuses, spread nicely around the county, all over, nobody there. Ironically, Cabarrus County documents an effort called School Parks. This is supposed to be an effort between Cabarrus Parks and two school districts in the county. And it's anchored in a 1970s state law, which states to assure maximum use of public school facilities by citizens of the community in this state. To assert all these, I'd like to assert all three of these, I'd like to assert that all three of these participants have done little to implement the state, state law. Ironically, Cabarrus County Parks and Active Living and the Kannapolis School Systems all call out these requirements in their procedures and policies. Concord's last attempt at parks haven't gone well, no new trails, some parks have had extensive maintenance, ending up with about what we started with. I'd offer a simple starting solution. On at least four of the schools, have the county parks department add several pavilions with grills and call it a park. This automatically provides gathering places with tennis courts very quickly around the county while keeping the cost very low. Expenses could be covered from Concord's bond for some of the sites, make these county parks, and add reservation requirements as with other parks. This seems reasonable, there seems to be little reason this couldn't be in place by August. And I did talk with Byron about this earlier in the week. I also, High Point has a different model. They let parks departments manage school facilities outside the classroom buildings. You could also set up a nonprofit, as you did with the Health Systems and the Cabarrus Health Alliance, who now advertises freely in Concord, in Charlotte, that you should get out and exercise, paid for by Cabarrus. Then this nonprofit could self-manage how successful they are implementing the state. On a different subject, I just want to point out that the CCS has operated over the last year in non, in module units that did not conform with building codes in the state, and that's only going to get fixed when the county managers provide funds, which is not in anybody's plan. Thank you for your time.
Rayjean Walker and James Ivy.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rayjean Walker. I'm the Regional Director, serving Cabarrus County at United Way of Greater Charlotte. And I'm joined by my colleague, Jamies Ivy, who is the interim Chief Impact Officer. We're honored to be here tonight to share our full support for the Stephen M. Moore's Behavioral Health Center and the transformational impact it will have on Cabarrus County and the region.
At United Way, we believe that every individual deserves access to compassionate, culturally competent, and community-rooted behavioral health care. In 2022, guided by direct community input, we made the intentional decision to prioritize mental wellness in Cabarrus County as a cornerstone of our work, not just as a response to crisis, but as a long-term commitment to building a more resilient, thriving community.
In Cabarrus County, United Way launched a mental wellness initiative focused on increasing awareness, reducing stigma, and expanding access to care, particularly in historically disinvested and underserved communities. At the heart of the work is a collaborative that centers the mental wellness of children and families, recognizing their unique needs and the ripple effects of community support. The strategy was informed by countywide community needs assessment, where residents identified mental health as one of the top three priorities facing Cabarrus County. Nationally, suicide deaths reached a record high in 2022, with nearly 50,000 lives lost, and over 12 million adults reported seriously considering suicide. These urgent indicators, both locally and nationally, reinforced United Way's decision to prioritize mental wellness in partnership with community members and frontline organizations. Since 2023, over $1 million has been invested directly into this effort through our funded agency partners. These dollars are made possible by a combination of generous individual donors who live in or designate funds to Cabarrus County, along with the support from committed local corporate partners. We know that mental health does not exist in a silo. That's why we continue to convene service providers, support school-based initiatives, and build bridges between clinical systems and community trust.
We commend you, the Board of Commissioners, for your leadership in moving this forward, this center forward. Cabarrus County is setting a model for what is possible when communities invest boldly in the well-being of their people. United Way stands ready to continue to work alongside you to ensure that the center, that this center not only opens its doors, but becomes a lasting hub for healing, hope, and equity for all. Thank you.
Ingrid Nurse.
Good afternoon, Chair Joe, Jeff Jones, and Chair Commissioners. I'm Ingrid Nurse, for the people, by the people, because I am the people. I could rehash the same concerns. It is remarkable how you all are consistently, are continuously finding new ways to increase our deficit after I, I heard, of course, about the budget and reviewed it. Every month, you literally have another million tacked on. We are literally millions in the hole with lawsuits overall, such as the one from Mr. Mike Dallas, and with poor financial management. You all do not care about the taxpayers, the law-abiding taxpayer and citizens, as we presume. If so, we are still trying to get the answer to, how do you plan to reduce the deficit and ensure responsible financial management? Again, Ingrid Nurse, for the people, by the people, because I am the people, law-abiding, taxpayer and citizen, Cabarrus County.
Eric Young.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eric Young. I am a Cabarrus County resident. I live in Kannapolis, North Carolina. I'm here to speak on the boards and committee appointment for juvenile crime prevention. As I was looking over the minutes, I noticed that we have someone that's going to be coming up that holds an at-large seat, who will be reappointed for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Her, her term expires in June 30 of 2025. My issue is, this, this certain person has been on the board for six, six terms, and that will be 13 years if she gets reappointed and she's on the schedule this time. I have no issue with who the person is. My issue is that any at-large board that we have with the county, I think we need new blood. And I have an issue when we're simply recycling some of the same people over and over. In the, in the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have 17 qualified people, 17 qualified people. So my ask is that before we recycle anyone on this prevention, juvenile crime prevention, or quite frankly, any... or quite frankly, any of the at-large positions throughout the county as far as the boards, that we reassess and find out if there are any other qualified folks actually that are able to fill that position. This county, we have numerous citizens in this county, and I would just like us to see, have more diversity, more new blood, so that we can have more ideas. I've worked, I'm a retired social worker business analyst. I've worked in the Criminal Justice Bureau as magistrate probation officer, juvenile corrections officer for many years, and especially when we're talking about something with juvenile crime prevention, we need sometimes some new blood. And to recycle someone who's been on an at-large position for six terms, seven terms, we have someone that's coming up, I believe in September, who's been, will be actually on her 20th year. I'm just asking that we look at those folks who we do have in the pipeline, and we give some of those folks an equal opportunity, because we have a lot of folks here in Cabarrus County that would love to help out their community to be part of this board. And I want to thank you for your time.
Dr. Kim Seldon.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Kim Seldon, a resident of Cabarrus County for 21 years and practicing pediatrics in Cabarrus County for 21 years. Thank you for your time. I am here to express my, actually asking for your support. Primary care doctors in Cabarrus County need your help leveraging your contacts and the impact that you could potentially have with members of Congress in DC. They, our calls have fallen deaf on their ears, they do not answer our calls, they're holed away somewhere, they're cocooned away, and so I'm hoping that you all can reach out to your contacts in DC, because we need help with your opposition to HR1. Specifically for Cabarrus County, I have a concern as a pediatrician for the threats to this bill and the Children's Health Insurance Program, CHIP. The current bill that passed the House of Representatives that is in the Senate right now threatens to strip away hundreds of billions of dollars, as you all know, but I need for you all to focus on the impact that it will potentially and invariably have on children in this county. It is unconscionable to strip away what I believe to be the right of children in our county, the ones that we all serve as doctors and also as politicians, that they have a medical home. To deny them access to comprehensive medical care that they can have in their medical homes is inhumane, but it's also fiscally irresponsible. We spoke about this the last time that I stood here, and so we really could use your help at this point, because we have been reaching out to politicians to try to advocate for the children, for people who are covered by Medicaid, but specifically for CHIP in this particular county. So that is something that I would like for you guys to really help us with, so that we can better serve our patients. I wanted to go back to something that you Commissioner Pittman had said several meetings ago that really disturbed me, and I just kind of wanted to circle back to that. This has to do with invocation, which, as a member of the body of faith, you and I probably share, have very, you know, similar things in common, but there was something that you said about invocation, that anyone who does not support invocation is not a real American, your words, sir, not mine. It was, I was confused by that language, because I have served several years on a board of an independent school in the area, as well as a member of a women's organization for many years. One organization opens with a word of prayer, the other one does not. I can assure you that members of one of those organizations is no less and no more American than the other. They all do very good and important work. They are all Americans. So your designation of real Americans is unnecessary language. It is deliberately provocative and divisive. Thank you for your time.
Give the rookie the chair. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right. All right, then we'll move on to new, we'll move on to new business. First order of business is Cabarrus County appointments, Commissioner Board appointment updates, motion. We have to assign some vacancies, I guess, and I believe those were the ones that were left when Miesmer, when Commissioner Miesmer took his position at the state. I see the Ohio ones. I'm trying to make this simple, so to go through all of them. I'm willing to take all those, but I understand there's some issues with a couple that other people may want, so I'll open that up. If there's any particular one that somebody wants to go ahead and...
Before there's conversation, I just want to note, there is one highlighted that we've already taken care of, and that's the Tourism Authority, just so we don't get into that one.
Okay, so we'll remove the Tourism Board.
Yeah. County Manager Newton is on that one.
All right, so. Let's just go down here. For the Cabarrus County Partnership for Children, I will be glad to serve on that if someone makes a motion. What's your move to do that? How do we do the appointment?
You might, I mean, you could go one by one, but it might be better to do a joint sort of omnibus and draw them each, and draw any ones that aren't included out, if that makes sense. And if that's the will of the board, too.
Okay, I understand, okay. I'll make a motion that, I think, the motion should be, if somebody make a motion to appoint Commissioner Jones to the open positions, all except for the City of Concord and the WASAC, I believe is the other one, somebody, that one's not on here right now, right?
If I may?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the tourism one is filled by Sean, and also the Exit 49 Task Force will be, Kelly has offered to take that. They haven't met in like two years, so I don't know that that's going to be an issue. So we can take that off there as well, which is the Exit 49 one.
Yeah, let's just go down the list real quick. That would be better. All right. First is the removal and appointment for the Cabarrus County Board of Equalization and Review. All right, we're going to get this right before we get out of here. All right, appointment to the Blended Community...
There we go.
Thank you, my eyes are old. All right, Blended Community Child Protection Team. Again, I'm willing to serve if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'm willing to make the motion for Commissioner Jones to be appointed to the Blended Community Child Protection Team.
Sure. All in favor? Say aye. All right, next would be the Cabarrus County Partnership for Children, Smart Start. Again, I'm willing to serve.
I'll make a motion for Commissioner Jones to serve as the representative for our Smart Start program.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next is the City of Concord, and I believe the motion's going to be for Commissioner Lindsay would like to have that one.
And I'll make a motion for myself to serve as the liaison for the City of Concord.
Sure.
All in favor? Say aye. We took off the task force. All right, Human Services Advisory Board, again, I'm willing to serve if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make the motion for Commissioner Jones to serve as the representative on the Human Services Advisory Board.
Thank you.
All in favor? All right, next would be the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, which I'm willing to serve.
I'll make the motion for Commissioner Jones to serve as the representative on JCPC.
Thank you.
All in favor? Say aye. Tourism is taken care of, as shown. All right, the Water and Sewer Authority, WASAC, I believe I have two people up here that want to discuss that. I'm willing to serve, but I'll open it up for discussion.
So I'm currently listed as the alternate on the WASAC and have said that I'm absolutely willing to serve in that role as a representative for the Commissioners.
I contacted WASAC. Technically, they don't have to have a Commissioner spot on there, so I want to, I want to replace Senator Miesmer with Jonathan Marshall, and I want to remove Doug Paris and replace him with Bob Ritchie, who was removed in the middle of his appointment by this board earlier this year. So I would like to remove both of them and replace them with those, and I can make that a formal motion.
I'll second that motion.
I was going to ask questions.
Well, we can discuss it.
Yeah, we'll discuss this. All right, you said you want to remove...
I would like to remove, well, Senator Miesmer has to come off.
Right, okay.
And then Town of Midland manager Doug Paris was put on at the beginning of this year to shake things up and affect change, and that, the person he replaced, Bob Ritchie, was, had just been appointed, and so that's why I want to put Bob back on there. With Bob and Jonathan, we had a total of 40 years of experience that we lost. WASAC is incredibly, is an incredibly important board. They, they know the history of that, and what that does is it still allows, because there was concern for Midland, it still allows Midland to have a seat with Josh Mendoza on the, on the WASAC board, so Midland still has a seat. It's just removing those two and replacing them with the other.
I mean, we, I certainly would like to serve in that role as a Commissioner representative. I think it's important for us to have a Commissioner representative on there. The changes that we made earlier this year, you know, I understand that there was folks that had been on there for a long time, but much as the gentleman said earlier during public comment, it is necessary for us in order to have fresh eyes, take a look at things, to have new people put on, in those positions, and so those were the changes that we made previously.
Ms. Chair. I would just say that Midland has been pushed aside for too long and underrepresented. We put Doug Paris on there to try to correct that with someone who was well-qualified to represent them, and I would be opposed to taking him off.
Midland's still represented by Josh Mendoza. You guys took two people off and put two people from Midland on there to prove a point is exactly why you did it. I'm not being around the bush, that's exactly why you did it, and the exact terminology you guys used was it was time for a shakeup and time for a change. I understand that some things need to change, but at the same time, you can't just get rid of 40 years of history. There's things that they might know that we miss. Their, the history with WASAC is there's been multiple times there's not been a Commissioner liaison to it. I called Chad Von Cannon and asked him. Town of Harrisburg doesn't have an elected official on there either, it's their town manager. So for me, this was finding a way to compromise by still giving Midland a seat. Josh Mendoza, they love, they love Josh on that board, he does an amazing job. They said he's level-headed, he's a great guy, and he represents Midland well. So this is, they're still represented. It's just, I'm trying to put the 40 years of experience that we lost back on there so that, that we have that. There's some big things going on with WASAC, and I think it's important that we keep the history so that we can move forward with that. So that's, that's my reasoning in that.
And I, I am seconded to see if Midland be treated as if they're not a part of this county, and what this would do is reduce their representation, and that's the point.
Midland does not own their system. The City of Concord owns it. So the way it was explained to me is if you go buy, if somebody buys you a car, but yet you want the title and your name, though you've not paid for it. That's exactly how it was explained to me. That's, to me, that, they were always represented by a Commissioner, and then they were represented by a City of Concord member, because the City of Concord owns that system. They've tried to sell it twice, but when you buy it, you have to pay for the maintenance, you have to pay for the people that keep it up, you have to pay for the equipment and everything else. And the last time I talked to Doug Paris, they weren't ready yet for that. They would like to be in a couple of years, but they're not ready. And so this is not me taking Midland completely off the board. They are, they still have a representative with Josh Mendoza, I'm just trying to add the history back, is where I'm at with that.
But to take them off, I said reduce their representation, and I don't see any need for that.
They didn't have any representation before, and then they went to three seats with the Commissioner, Doug Paris, and Josh Mendoza, but yet they don't own their system, so...
Can you tell me what the board makeup is now, as far as representation?
Each, each community has, has members of it. Kannapolis, Concord, Harrisburg, Mount Pleasant, you've got three county seats, so, so that's, you have, that's what we have, I don't know their exact numbers. So Midland still has one of those seats, it's just putting these other two back on it. That, that were took off at the very beginning when the power of this board changed, when Commissioner Shu begged to stay on it and, and was denied. So, while I understand, you know, people want it, you know, there were some things that were wanted by everybody up here, and we were told it was time for a change. Talked to several Chad Von Cannon, talked to Mayor Hennett from Kannapolis, talked to Bob Ritchie and Jonathan Marshall. Both of them are willing to serve again and absolutely excited to serve again, and that way they could finish out the terms that they started.
I can comment to that, too, Mr. Chairman, since I did serve it for a number of years, and like Commissioner Lindsay said, is, I enjoyed it, we made a lot of progress. We got the new facility, Phase Three complete, Phase Four we're working on, we're working on the Moody Creek Reservoir to provide additional capacity for, for Midland and for Mount Pleasant, but the thing that distinguishes Midland, and we've explained this, we've run it through the North Carolina people, environmental people up there, and they tell us to be a member of the WASAC board, you have to have, be a participating member. A participating member is someone that has a retail customer base. They take care of the, Concord don't take care of their city, they take care of it. They got their own people, the maintenance and the billing and all of those things, and, and that's the thing that Midland has had such a problem with, is because, as Commissioner Wortman said, they've tried to buy that, but they just don't have the money. They just don't have the money to buy the system from Concord, and Concord's tried to sell it to them several times, but they just don't have the resources, nor do they have the resources to keep it up and do the billing and do all of that. And I've been down there, you know, whenever Midland was having meetings, and I, it's been years and years ago, when they had a feud like you wouldn't believe over the cost of the sewage system that was being provided by Concord. And, but I think Midland has so much potential, so much potential, but they, you know, nobody wants to pay taxes. We got folks here that fuss at us all the time about taxes, and they, they're ones that complain all the time, well, they tout all the time that we got the lowest tax rate in the county, 21 cent, and then they look at their neighbor next door, Locust, and Locust is thriving at 36 cent. And so you, you have to have revenue to get these things, and Midland just don't have the revenue or the resources, and so putting the people back that was on there, Josh, Jonathan... And so, putting the, the people back that was on there, Josh, Jonathan and Bob Ritchie, both of those men have got, as Mr. Wortman said, 40 years or better since the inception, whenever all of this was turned over to WASAC from the county. And we, you know, they, they got, they can tell you the things that none of us know. And we, that, WASAC needs that information. So, that's why I would support Jonathan and Bob to go back on.
But we're not going to leave Midland without a representation.
They still have Josh Mendoza.
And he represents Midland's interests?
Correct.
And we're not talking about adding another one, we're talking about just not take away what they have. That's what I'm talking about. And Concord doesn't have to control the whole county.
Another quick question. It appears that we can remove and replace these people at will. Is that correct?
The, the commissioner's seats.
Right, I mean, we could...
See, each municipality has so many seats. Kannapolis has got two, Harrisburg's got two, but I don't think they got anybody appointed right now. You don't necessarily have to do that, but you, it takes nine people to make up that WASAC board.
Okay, and how many of the county do we appoint?
We have, we, we get three sites, three seats.
Okay.
And we, and really, when I was on the board, we were trying to change that, because it don't quite seem fair, you know, and we realized that, you know, you take, like, say for example Kannapolis, well, no, let's use Concord, because they're the biggest provider of the services that WASAC provides. And so, they got two representatives. The county don't have any municipalities, but yet, we got three seats.
Are you telling me that our three seats are all filled by Midland?
Pardon?
Our three seats aren't all filled by Midland, right?
No, no. Midland don't have any seats on, well, other than Doug Paris and Chris Meesmer, and of course, Chris, like Mr. Wortman said, they got to come off.
Right now, two of those three are filled by Midland.
And one is vacant.
Correct. If I may?
Yeah, please, please, I'm trying to understand.
So, to your point, Commissioner Shu, you stated that each municipality has two representations. I understand that Harrisburg may not have theirs right now, but Midland had zero when Commissioner Pittman and I got on here. So, what we did with the majority vote was to give Midland the opportunity to have two seats, just like what you said, that each municipality should have two. The county commissioners have a, three at-large seats that we have access to put on there, and I would like to serve in that, one of those commissioner's seats to, to replace Commissioner Meesmer. Allow Midland to still have their two representation that they've had.
House Support Commissioner Lindsey for then.
Does it?
I'll support Commissioner Lindsey for that position.
I know it's going to be very important, what we do.
That's a great question. Alternates, is that?
Alternate is for if they don't show up to the meeting.
Yeah, but how are they named? Like Commissioner Lindsey is currently an alternate, is, is that on the table for adjustment as well?
I would like Bob Ritchie and Jonathan Marshall on there, because that's 40 years of experience, and it still leaves Midland with one seat.
Alternative.
She could remain.
Okay. This is tough.
Able to?
No, we're going to, we're going to vote on it. Never, never run from a problem. WASAC's very important to, is developmental, trying to drive revenues, so we don't have to increase taxes. So, I want the best people who know what they're doing on that board figuring out how we can get capacity. And that's what it's all about. I'm sure that's what Midland, Kannapolis, all of them, making sure they can gobble up what limited capacity we have. So, we have a motion and a second, right? All right. Clerk, you mind reading that motion again? Just want to make sure.
Depending on the motion, which is...
Okay, okay. So, to remove, all right, so, motion to remove...
Chris Meesmer and Doug Paris. And then you have to come back with a second motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
And I'll make a motion to add Jonathan Marshall and Bob Ritchie to those spots and keep Commissioner Lindsey as alternate.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so what's the role of the alternate?
If that person can't perform their duty or they don't show up, then Commissioner Lindsey steps in.
And then she shows up and does it. But we have a right, if these people don't perform, or we see Midland being taken advantage of in any way, that we can remove these people. And they have how many years' experience, you said?
Over 40 between the two of them.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. I believe, is that all of them? Is that all of them? Okay. Next is the county manager for the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 budget.
That's right. So, in the agenda as attachments, we have the FY '26 budget ordinance drafted up as presented in the recommended budget, along with technical adjustment and summary by fund, and our five-year plan, recommended budget and technical adjustments that were discussed. I know that we had a healthy amount of discussion at our last meeting. Rocha's here, as well as myself, if there are any questions prior to any motions being made.
And this budget, it includes the two ambulances, the two sheriff's cars, fully funding the school's operational budget, and then fully funding the EDC back, adding the $225,000 back to make them full, correct?
So, this ordinance represents just the budget as presented? We have that budget ordinance ready to replace this ordinance, should the board adopt it? That's our second. Correct, yep, okay.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer some comments and a motion before we proceed with the budget itself. Please. I've spent several weeks trying to make sense of the proposed budget booklet. I requested a line item version. After receiving it on Monday, June 9th, and spending the better part of three days studying that, I prepared and sent to the other commissioners and our county manager, Sean Newton, a report of my reaction to the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026 on June 11th. I was asked to meet with Mr. Newton, Kelly Sifford, and Todd Shadley, Todd Shandley, excuse me, on January 13th to discuss my concerns about the proposed budget. We had a very good conversation, and I very much appreciate the attitude with which they approached my concerns. As we discussed in that meeting, there are some items I had addressed that are required by law, so I can't do anything about those. There are others which are under contract, some of which will be coming to an end in the next year or so, but which cannot be removed from the budget this time around due to those contracts. There are other matters which they explained to me are not costing taxpayers very much, because some of them are actually paid at least to some extent by fees paid by participants in the activities they involve. Thus, some of the items which cause me concern cannot be dealt with in this year's budgeting sequence. I can only hope that some of those things will not be repeated in the budget once the commission has the freedom to dismiss them. One item that still concerns me under the capital improvement portion of the proposed budget is a matter of student Chromebooks and replaced outdated TVs and smart books. While there may be some need for some of this expense, I continue to urge that we move away from computerized gadgets in the lower grades and return to basic education with the use of pencil or pen and paper, in concurrence with the state law demanding that students be taught the multiplication tables and cursive writing, and you, again, you can't do cursive writing on a computer. How much that amount would be, I cannot determine, but I urge that we defund that portion of this item, whatever amount it is. Another matter will be, or that will be reflected in my proposal is the $50,000 under building maintenance listed as building maintenance feasibility quarantine space for the animal shelter. When we discussed this matter, I was told that it was being removed, because other plans had been made to use a trailer at the current animal shelter location, so it would not be needed at this time. While we agreed on this item, I will still include its removal in my recommendations, just to be clear. I had also mentioned the item listed as West Nile virus vaccines for $10,762. It was explained to me that this was listed erroneously, as it was supposed to be, for mosquito control. So, I'm glad we got that corrected, and I think that's okay. However, there are still some items which we can remove, and I hereby move that we do so as follows. EDC 401K contributions, $14,591. EDC allocation, not sure for what, $175,000. EDC insurance, $40,500. EDC insurance and bonds, $4,0961. EDC life insurance, $123. EDC Medicare, $4,0232. EDC retirement, $41,993. EDC salaries, $291,820. EDC Social Security, $18,093. EDC Vision, $62. EDC Workman's Comp, $351. That's a total just on EDC of $591,726. There's also Chamber of Commerce, I'll get it right in a minute, Chamber of Commerce, annual dues, $1,850. Building maintenance, quarantines, space, animal shelters, I mentioned earlier, a $50,000 feasibility study, and we had agreed that that would not be spent on that. So, including that, that they've already agreed to take out $50,000, that would be a total proposed reduction of $643,576, and I so move.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Go ahead, discussion.
Any discussion?
If I may, as I've said before, the EDC is not a government agency and should not get taxpayer funding, same as some of these others.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the budget as recommended by the county manager with the inclusion of the technical adjustments identified during the June 4th budget meeting and the following additional items. I would like to remove the, and eliminate the contract for lobbyist and terminate that contract, which will save us $4,000 a month. His contract is up at the end of this month. And the history of that is, we didn't have a lobbyist until we were trying to get away from Cardinal with the health stuff. They helped us do that, and we used him for a couple more times, but historically, we have not had one and did not need one. That's what our state representatives are for. And I would also like to remove the $10,000 finance adjustment for the financial advisor contract.
Any discussion? I have a couple of questions. All right, this lobby, lobbyist, you said it contract expires?
Contract expires at the end of this month, and then it is on a 30-day notice as to, it's pretty much month-to-month, but we have to give 30-day notice before we terminate.
Why would we have a lobbyist?
Currently, the lobbyist, which was established prior to my time here, has been working with the State General Assembly to advocate for securing state-level funds for the animal shelter, as well as helping us with funds for the second interest of Franklin Park.
Have we had any communication back from him on the second entrance for Franklin Park?
I have been in contact with him a couple times, and with the current process of the state budget, it's too early to tell if member funds would be allocated for those individuals, but he has been cautiously optimistic that we will see some funds come once the state level budget is finished in the next few weeks, so.
So, he's still got 30 days. We could work out his contract, and let's see what he can produce in 30 days. Let's get an update, see exactly what he's accomplishing. He's getting us money for the animal shelter and parks and any other things, schools, especially schools, if he can work on that. Let's see what he's got, but we need to see some results or something in the pipeline to make it worthwhile to keep him at least month-to-month.
Do you want me to amend my motion to take that part out, and let's wait 30 days and see?
I would love for you to.
All right, Lauren, I'll amend my motion to remove that part, but still keep the $10,000, cut the $10,000 finance adjustment for the financial advisor contract.
Now, I'm going to talk about the $10,000 finance things. Somebody explain.
We used, and Kelly, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Sean, we used Carter, Doug Carter, DEC, and I believe he was charging us $15,000 a year. And then, when we went to the LGC, there would be more fees to go into that. Am I allowed to say the other ones?
I wouldn't say any names.
There's another one that is $40,000, which is what this $10,000 adjustment is for, so we would be paying $25,000 more. And then, the one originally that came was $50,000, and then withdrew their bid, because Cabarrus County didn't seem enthusiastic enough for their, their services. So, this would, in my opinion, allow us to go with the cheaper option when we're available.
Can I add one clarifying? So, the one cautionary note I'd say is, we have not gotten confirmation from our former financial advisors on what current rates would look like, so, correct, right?
I have a tentative amount, but I don't think we have gotten an official word, but it is still less.
Okay, so just cautionary that those numbers might adjust once we formalize that contract.
So, if we, if we cut this $10,000 to where we go with the former financial consultant, we'll be saving money in the long run.
Yes, likely.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want Mr. Meesmer, I mean, Mr., I'm sorry, Wortman, to faint, but I was actually in agreement with him on those things. I'm sorry he withdrew.
Well, I got you two to agree, I'm behind y'all.
But, you know, I would like to have seen those changes made. However, since they're not, and looks like we're not going to get rid of EDC or anything else that's non-governmental, I'm going to end up having to vote no on the budget.
I understand that, but I appreciate you letting me know where you were on this. Okay, any more discussion then?
I would just add, just procedurally, from the, if you wanted to do the tackle of lobbyists next meeting, it would just be at the risk of telling y'all something y'all already know, just to terminate the, the contract.
30 days.
Give the 30 days, and then, obviously, that fixes itself. I just bring it up, because you're passing the budget ordinance tonight, not terminating the contract.
Correct.
So, anyway, sorry if that was duplicative.
So, do we need, in case we keep them, do we need to keep that item in?
I, I understood Commissioner Wortman withdrawing that part of the motion, so it's still in the budget.
Okay.
And so, you can fix that after the fact, next month, if you all elect to terminate those services.
Okay, just want to make sure. All right, so, we have a motion. You second it?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All right, and any other adjustments? The overall motion was on the budget. The overall motion was on the budget. Where is it now?
Yes, it was, and it included the two ambulances, the two sheriff's cars.
Just want to make sure it includes all of it.
Operational budget for the school, fully funding it, and the fully funding of the EDC.
That is what those technical adjustments mentioned.
That's the technical adjustments now.
Okay. Those plus the adjustment to the financial advisor.
All right, any?
Make sure those adjustments, because I discussed the budget.
Is it in here?
Lauren, do you have that to bring it up? Screen.
If there's no other amendments or adjustments, then we can vote on this one. All in favor of the budget?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
All right, Carrie's. Well, we got a budget. Next is finance on Cabarrus County 2026 capital project budget request, Mr. Jim Howden.
Good evening, Commissioners. You just approved the county and the schools' capital projects and the deferred maintenance projects. This agenda item allows us to track those in the capital project funds for tracking purposes. So it asks the board to approve the budget amendment and the project ordinances with the caveat to allow for any corrections that are needed. The, what you have in front of you was from the recommended budget, and we just made some changes with the ambulances, the sheriff vehicles, and the schools and so forth. That allows me to go ahead and make those changes, and then we will submit that with the minutes, so you have it for the next meeting.
Any questions in here? All right, no questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Second, anybody?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, Carrie.
If I may back up one second, I'm so sorry, I forgot to add this language, but because we adjusted the Economic Development Corporation allocation, we will have a public hearing that will need to come back to the board next month to have that funding recognized by the public. And so that'll be subject to holding the necessary public hearing with the additional funding.
That's fine.
I just wanted you all to be aware, you will see that next month on your agenda.
That's fine. All right, next we'll move to motions of appointments and committees. All right, first one for the removal and appointment for Cabarrus County Board of Equalization and Review. Do we have a motion on that? I guess that motion would be to remove McGuinness from seat three of Board of Equalization and Review and thank her for her service. And appoint Mike Wallace. Any guy a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Next would be Board's Committee Appointment for Centralina Workforce Development Board. Have a motion to appoint Phil Seale, seat number one, anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve it, and I don't know if we want to do all three of these. I sit on their board, and David Holler with Centralina, they've already kind of voted on these on their board. They're specific spots that that board makes up, so I don't know if, are we allowed to do that? And I'll just, unless anybody has any of the other people they'd like to add, I'll just make a motion to approve all three of theirs.
That's completely fine.
I'll second.
Traditionally, we have.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Next would be removal and appointment, I saw the same one, sorry. We just got all those. All right, this is a motion to appoint a position in the jury for the county commissioner appointed, the commissioner. Is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Christine Barrier.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Board's Committee Appointment for Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. This is a motion to fill the Chief District Court Judge, seat number 14. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Steve Grossman to seat number 14.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Next is appointment to seat number 13 of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Defense Attorney, seat number 13. Is there a motion?
I have a question first, if that's okay. How many terms has Megan Baumgartner served? Well, it was blank when I looked at it last, I believe, and so that's why I wanted clarification on it.
Yes, we did have somebody raise concern about how long somebody's been on it. That's a good question.
She's looking that up. She is for that specific seat. She is the only qualified applicant on file that we have for that specific seat.
Okay.
So there is no, not another qualified attorney to do it? Yeah, okay. Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Megan Baumgartner to seat number 13.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Next is a motion point to fill the Representative United Way and other non-staff, seat number 17 on Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Carolyn Carpenter to seat number 17 for the nonprofit.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
Next is a motion to appoint the Phil Atle, at large seat, 19E of the Juvenile Crime Convention Council, term expiring June 30th, 2027. Is there a motion?
So I would like a motion, or I would like to make a motion to fill that seat with Alvarez Santana.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Next is a motion to appoint to fill a member of the Business Committee, seat number 15 of the Juvenile Crime Convention Council, term expiring September 30th, 2025. Is there a motion? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve Holly Edwards for that seat.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Next is a motion to fill the ETJ seat number two on the Mount Pleasant Planning Board and Board of Adjustment, term expiring June 30th, 2028. Is there a motion?
So if it's okay, I think we can actually combine these two as well.
Okay, we will definitely do that.
So I'll make a motion to.
Seat one and two.
For seat one and two, Bridget Fowler for seat number one, and William Moose for seat number two.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Next would be a motion to appoint to fill the member, H.R.M. Health Cabarrus Local Government Advisory Board seat on the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County, term expiring June 30th, 2028. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, or to appoint Asia Rodriguez.
Second.
All in favor, oh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Next is a motion to appoint to fill the dentist seat on the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County, term expiring June 30th, 2028. Is there a motion?
I'm motion to approve Carrie Dove.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Next is a motion to fill the Leadership Representative, Conaples City School seat on the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County, term expiring June 30th, 2026. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve Daryl Adams.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Next is a motion to fill seat number two of the Rowan County Community College Board, term expiring 2030th, 2029, to include any exceptions in appointment policy.
Make a motion to approve Cindy Minnet to fill the seat.
Second.
I believe she's seat number one, and this is seat number two.
Let's see who's first. All right, so for seat number two, I'll make a motion, I'll withdraw that motion, and I'll make a motion to appoint William Dush to seat number.
He's actually seat number one.
That backwards.
You were right to begin with. The first agenda item is seat number two.
Right.
Which is Cynthia Minnet.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to appoint Cindy Minnet to fill that seat.
She is seat number two?
Yeah.
Okay. My apologies. I had a note said seat number one. All right, is there a second of your motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to point out that she has served five terms with RCCC, and I do think that there are other qualified folks who could potentially take that seat and offer potential new ideas for that board.
Any further discussion? All in favor, motion, say aye. All opposed? Next would be a motion to appoint to fill seat number one of the Rowan County Cabarrus Community College Board, term expiring June 30th, 2027. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve William Dush.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
Now it's time to see if there's any updates from commission members who serve as liaison to municipalities or other various boards and committees. Any updates?
Mr. Chairman, or if you got somebody else first, go ahead. On May 28th, I was at the Salisbury Community Center with the, let's think right now, with the Cabarrus-Rowan MPO TAC. Senator Harry Warren, Senator Chris Mason, and Representative Grant Campbell were in attendance, along with Representative Jonathan Alman. They all addressed a group on progress on the budget in Raleigh. Phil Conrad presented information on the progress of federal road projects and other issues requested projects in the area exceeded federal funds available, which is not unusual, he said. But it's disappointing when projects are pending, especially when there has been some miscommunication. Conaples reported on a proposed project for Midlake Avenue sidewalk to connect transit elements, waiting for funding. Salisbury reported on Brenner Avenue Safety Improvements Project, which has been funded but needs more funding to cover materials and other costs. Seeking Hefner VA Medical Center to other facilities nearby, seeking access to those, that is. They got $820,000, cost over $1 million, the updated cost estimate, over 3.4 million, applying for 2.2 million in other funding. They said concerning carbon reduction project, and also plans include a roundabout. Conaples is wanting pedestrian crossing in the Loop Road area, requesting funding, expected cost is $500,000 as a CRP project. Division 9 DOT says Highway 49 Bridge work is nearing completion, and others also. Division 10 says DOT has several projects that are complete or nearing completion in Cabarrus County. Let's see if I can find, oh, here it is. Also attended the Midland Town Council meeting on Tuesday, the second Tuesday of this month, and they passed a resolution. I wondered, did any of y'all get this resolution from them? Let me quickly read it. Concerning WASAC, whereas the town of Midland is located within Cabarrus County, and whereas the Water Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County operates the Muddy Creek Sewer Treatment Plant that serves the Midland area, and whereas the town of Midland secured $11 million in state funding for the design and expansion of the Muddy Creek Sewer Treatment Plant, and whereas recent discussion within WASAC included shifting flow from the Rocky River Sewer Treatment Plant to the Muddy Creek Sewer Treatment Plant, and whereas WASAC staff and WASAC consultants have concluded it would cost upwards of $20 million to design and construct the infrastructure to shift this flow, and an additional 26.4 million to treat the shifted flow at the Muddy Creek Plant, and whereas the total combined cost will be approximately 46.4 million or $190 per gallon for the shifted flow, which is not cost-effective for utility rate payers, and whereas other more cost-effective alternatives exist such as expansion of the Rocky River Plant or construction of a treatment plant in Mount Pleasant. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Midland opposes the flow shift discussions taking place within WASAC, as adopted in Midland, North Carolina, the 10th day of June 2025. They also brought up some concerns about solar farms in the area. They said there's one on Wallace Road and one on Bethel Road Extension that get no real maintenance, so the grass is like two to three feet high in those places. They said Mount Pleasant Road was mowed only every three months, and wondering what does the contract say about that. Chief Coley said, addressed Corning issue, they're appealing their taxes costing Mid, or if they succeed in their appeal of their taxes, it would cost Midland Fire Department $157,000, but they still want services after getting so much incentives. 80% of incentives for solar fields, the panels are facing west, getting only the last bit of light in the. Eighty percent of incentives for solar fields, the panels are facing west, getting only the last bit of light in the day. Landowners are not getting paid rent, the landowners where the solar panels are, are not getting paid their rent. They request oversight over solar farms and information on what makes, or excuse me, who makes the money and who gets the power. Most recycled materials, that's another issue, they said most recycled materials, about eighty percent, are actually being taken to the dump with the regular trash these days because of the cost of recycling. They're just now, they've just now started taking glass again after not doing that for a while, and they said, you know, glass recycling, that's after three years of taking none, according to a gentleman who was there from Waste Pro, and they discussed possibly making some changes in their contract on that.
Quick question. Have we looked into those issues that they raised?
Not that I know of. That's why we're raising it, so it can be...
That's what I'm saying, so we need to look into those and see what's going on there.
I guess Mr. Duke would kind of check with people that would do that.
That's why I'll make sure.
That's right, yep. I took a note. We can certainly look into that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other updates? All right, next we have some applications for some vacancies. We have them some boards and committees. Just need to encourage people to visit the county's website. This is an opportunity for citizens to get involved. We need many applications. We, we do fill seats, a lot of seats, with people over and over because we don't have applications from new people wanting to get in, so get involved, is what I can say. But you can check our site for those. It has each one. It looks like we have one in active living parks, thirteen in adult care home community advisory committee, one in concord planning commission. Library Board of Trustees has two that are expired. Nursing Home Community has eleven vacancies. Region F Agent Advisory Committee has two vacancies. Transportation Advisory Board has five, and Youth Commission has seven. All right, now open it up for general comments. Anybody?
We have David Thrift come down. I think he's got a presentation, a short presentation for us.
Good evening, Commissioners. I won't take too much of your time. I just wanted to answer some of the questions that were raised at the budget meeting. I was unable to attend, but I think the main question that was asked was what the potential impact would have been, if you could, if the revaluation from two thousand twenty-four was moved to two thousand twenty-five, if we could identify what that impact might be. I will start by saying there's, you know, first for clarity, General Statute one oh five, two eighty-six talks and speaks to the timing of revaluation. So it's required by General Statute that we do a revaluation at least once every eight years. Commissioners have the ability within that statute to do an optional advancement. Cabarrus County has done that since two thousand four. We've been on a four-year cycle. There's also, that optional advancement clause also gives the commissioners to change that schedule at any point, so the commissioners could have made a decision to change the revaluation date. There's another part of that statute that allows for a mandatory advancement if the sales ratio report, which I'll talk about in just a minute, is either above or below fifteen percent from, a hundred percent from a sales ratio standpoint. So Cabarrus County's two thousand twenty-two sales ratio hit that threshold, and that would have required a revaluation by at least January, two thousand twenty-five. So that would have been the extent that we could have moved that revaluation date, had you chosen to do so. That being said, it could have been moved, and therefore, looking at what the potential impact would be, there's kind of three ways to potentially do that. One, as Mr. Wortman mentioned in the meeting the other night, is to compare what other counties have experienced in their two thousand twenty-five revaluation. Lauren, if you'll... Switch slide. So I just did kind of an informal survey of counties that performed a two thousand twenty-five revaluation. This is a list. The second column shows when their last revaluation was, which is important, and the third column shows the percentage increase that they experienced in the two thousand twenty-five revale. So the reason the last revaluation is important, I think I've highlighted some there, those are the only ones that had revaluation dates prior to, either at two thousand twenty or prior to two thousand twenty, which is our last revaluation date. The difficulty in this comparison is that these are all different markets. The timeframes are all different, and so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison to look at county to county, but I think this information could show that had we waited for a five-year revaluation versus a four-year revaluation, the numbers you see there and highlighted are certainly higher than what our percentage increase was in two thousand twenty-four, which is about fifty-six percent. Another potential way of approaching this is to look at real estate market activity. So next slide would be just MLS reporting information. So in the year of two thousand twenty-three, which is the timeframe in which we studied for our two thousand twenty-four revale, out of just over two thousand sales, the average sale price is three eighty-seven, median sales price of three fifty-three. Looking to the next year, two thousand twenty-four, which would have been the market timeframe for a two thousand twenty-five revale, showed more sales, just twenty-eight hundred sales, average sale price of four twenty-four, median sales price of three eighty, so that's about a nine and a half percent increase from an average sale price perspective. Not a direct implication of what the impact necessarily would be, but it does show an increase in real estate market activity over the course of the year. And the third item there is just a continuation from January until this summer now, so we see that trend continuing. The third approach, next slide, would be, and I think the most beneficial way of looking at this is to look at our actual sales data. This is information of sales that took place from October first through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. So that would be the three-month period directly before a two thousand twenty-five revale, where we'd have one. Total sales are just under a thousand sales. The median sales ratio is about ninety-three point eight percent. So in the blue box at the bottom, we'll kind of talk a little bit about sales ratio. That is a relationship between the sales price of a real estate transaction and the tax assessed value. So if your assessed value for tax purposes was three fifty, which is close to our median assessed value, and that property sold for three hundred and seventy-three, above that tax assessed value, the sales ratio for that would be ninety-three point eight percent. So that's an example of one sale. What we're showing here is that over the nine hundred and sixty-two sales that happened in that timeframe, the average of those sales ratios was about ninety-three point eight percent. So that's a description that sales that were taking place right before two thousand twenty-five were six to seven percent below our current tax assessed value. So the impact of that would be, if we did a revaluation in two thousand twenty-five, we would expect potentially that to be more of an increase than we saw by six percent. So that is kind of a quick version, using a lot of math to get to that answer, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I appreciate you coming to do that, because I asked you to, because we've heard a lot about the revale. So just to clarify, statutorily, we would have had to do the revaluation this year at the latest.
That's correct.
Because we had an increase in the fifteen percent, according to a letter we got.
We had hit that threshold that would have required a mandatory advancement to two thousand twenty-five.
If we would have done the revaluation this year compared to when we did it last year, it would be six to seven percent higher if we would have waited till this year to do it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to get it done here, and I told you the other day, I knew what you thought, you're doing your job.
Thanks, sir.
That law needs to be changed. If I were in the legislature now, I didn't think of it back then, because I hadn't faced such a big increase. But now, if I were there, I would be offering a bill. I thought I cut it off.
Okay. If I were there now, I'd be offering a bill to say that you never pay taxes on more than what you pay for the house. You sell it for more, that next person would pay it. That way, we wouldn't hurt so many people who are having a hard time paying their mortgage and rent, I mean, and taxes at the same time. I'm fortunate that I've paid off my house a few years back, else I don't know if I could handle both. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Jones, I have one more. I'm going to go down there to present it.
If I have Lauren Linker come down? For those that don't know, this is Lauren's last meeting with us. She's going to be staying with the county, just in a different capacity. So we got together, and we wanted to do something for you, and we had this typed out, and I'm going to, I'm going to read it. Recognition of Lauren Linker, clerk to the Board of Commissioners. The Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, past and present, wish to offer their sincerest thanks to Lauren Linker for her dedicated service to the board and the county over the past eight years. Lauren has been instrumental in providing structure and guidance to the board on procedural matters and more. Lauren has been a welcoming presence to new board members, offering orientation and introducing them to many responsibilities of serving as a county commissioner. Lauren has addressed the questions and needs of each board member warmly and efficiently. We wish her the very best in her new endeavor and are grateful that she will continue serving Cabarrus County. She is a tremendous asset to our community, and we had every commissioner that you've ever worked for sign it. Tim Fur, Diane Honeycutt, Jeff Jones, Blake Keiger, Laura Lindsey, Chris Meesmer, Steve Morris, Larry Pittman, Liz Poole, Lynn Shu, Barbara Strang, and myself. So this is for you. You have helped all of us. You've answered questions. You've picked up your phone at all hours of the day, and you're going to be sorely missed. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
No more comments? Go ahead.
So to make it even more exciting, and thank you, Lauren, for everything that you've done for myself and for all of us, truly. And so, of course, we need to finish this meeting up with puppies and kittens, because that's exactly what we, that's exactly how we should finish a meeting. So I do want to thank Julie from the animal shelter for bringing Little Bo Peep to the, to visit us today. So she is up for adoption at the shelter, and this is the new video that we did last week. I do want to say thankfully that we have already had everyone adopted, with the exception of Willow from this video. So I just thank you all so much for all of you going out to the shelter and deciding to rescue and adopt instead of buying. So this is our June shelter video. Hey, everybody. Commissioner Laura Lindsey here at our amazing animal shelter. Heads up, we have some super sweet babies to meet today. Let's go meet them now. This is Willow. She's three years old. She just had a litter of six kittens, and now she's looking for a family of her own. Come meet her today. Flip Flop, hey buddy! This is Flip Flop. He's a shepherd husky mix, four to five months old, in a litter of seven, and he's the last one left. Thanks so much for joining us today. As you can see, these animals have a lot of love, and they just need someone to share it with. Call or come by the animal shelter today and make them part of your family.
All right, Lauren, I want to say thank you. You know, I came in, you realize how difficult it's going to be to get me working with technology paper, so you found another position to take. I understand that completely. But no, thank you for all your help, if you didn't have. All right, no other comments. We need to go into a motion for a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes one forty-three dash three, eighteen, eleven, eight, three, and nine.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will go into closed session.
Chris, how's your paper coming? Doing good? Good as expected? Is it good as expected? That's good. I'm glad.
Any motions?
I can't remember his last name. I remember Doug Hall as our county attorney with Sean having authority to do any negotiations on server and that sort of thing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? No further business. Meeting is adjourned. I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.